Okay. Good evening. It's 6:00 PM October 9. And I would like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce this meeting is being televised live on local channel 8 and 1072 HD, which supposedly is going to be, it's going to be taking over 8 and it'll be moving forward at 1072 HD in the future. If we can all rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann, two over to my left. And you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody have anything that's not on the agenda? Great, thank you. Also, at the end or somewhere during the, every, each presentation, I will reach out to the audience. If for some reason I ever forget, feel free to remind me. My goal is to get input from everybody that chooses to give us input. So, that being said, if I make a mistake, feel free to correct me. Tonight's sitting will be on the first, will be, I guess, the five regular members, right? Oh, no. Yeah, five regular members will be the first one. And then, as I understand, and the second one. And then, Charles, I understand that Scott will be stepping down.
Yes.
Okay. So, why don't we start with the first application, please? Charlie, would you please read it in record?
Continued hearings for October 9, 2024, Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals. To Ned Bessie Road. Owner Peter W. Selenius, trustee of the Selenius Realty Trust, requests a special permit under 174-17.1, 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in an R5 zoning district, map 21, parcel 2, Mashpee, Mass. Continued September 25, 2024 hearings at the request of the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the owners of the property. This is a property located at 2 Ned Bessie Road in Mashpee. It is a raise and replace. So, it is a, seeking a special permit under 174-17.1. And also, given the fact that it's within 50 feet of a wetland resource area, there's also relief necessary under 174-33. This property is located within the R3 zoning district, which is, has a minimum lot size requirement of 40,000 square feet, minimum frontage of 150 feet, 40-foot front yard setback, 15-foot side and rear yard setbacks, 20% lot coverage max, and the 50-foot wet setback to the wetland area. This lot has a few nonconformities. One is lot size. The total lot area of this lot is 12,800 square feet, which makes it a non-conforming lot. I understand from, that the abutters think that the calculations are incorrect, but either way, it is a non-conforming lot irrespective of how you calculate it. So, the frontage is 75 feet, which is non-conforming. The property is within 50 feet of the pond and the inland bank, so it's non-conforming. The north side yard setback is 9.9 feet, which is non-conforming. And the south side, south side yard setback is 8.6, which is a non-conforming condition. Again, understanding that there is a disagreement over the calculation. The lot coverage is under your 20%, and it will be decreasing. So, the structure that they have now versus what is going, is proposed is decreasing. So, under any scenario, your lot coverage is going down, your structure coverage is going down with this proposal. The structure is going to be further away from the resource area. It is going to be building code compliant. We are going to eliminate the north side setback. We are going to eliminate the south side setback, nonconformity. So, on the north side, we're going from 9.9 feet to 15.9, making it a conforming condition. On the south side, we're going from 8.6 to 18, which is, eliminates that nonconformity. This project has been approved by the Conservation Commission. We are not creating any new nonconformities. We are not intensifying any existing nonconformities. There is sufficient parking under your bylaw. Residential structures require two parking spaces. There is a driveway that can fit two cars. That's all that's required under your bylaw. I would suggest, there are photos provided with the application, which shows that this redevelopment would be consistent with the neighborhood. I would note, and it was noted in the abutter letter, this property is located within the groundwater protection overlay district, but I would suggest to this board that it does not require any relief because there is less than 2,500 square feet of impervious surface. So, if you look under your bylaw, 174-80F, any, any development which renders impervious surfaces less than 2,500 square feet is allowed as of right, does not require a special permit, does not require you to meet any of those special permit requirements. I would just note, the driveway is gravel. It's not a paved driveway, so I do not consider that as part of the impervious surface calculation. And the driveway, as this board knows, does not count towards lot coverage. And under the Mashpee bylaw, the only thing that counts as lot coverage is structure. So, again, we have a raise and replace. We have a raise and replace that is going to eliminate two of your nonconformities. It has been approved by the Conservation Commission. Overall lot coverage under any calculation is being reduced. Coverage of structures is going to be reduced. This is certainly a project that falls within the types of projects that this is, this board has approved in the past. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. My clients are here, their builder is here, they're happy to answer any questions as well. But again, I would suggest that this, with eliminating two nonconformities, reducing coverage, getting a building code compliant house, been approved by Conservation, moving further away from the resource areas, that, these are all improvements to the property and would not render a situation that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists.
Charlie, would you read it? There's a lot of letters, there's some letters.
Yeah, let me go to the Board of Health and Conservation first.
Certainly.
Get them for the record. We have Board of Health comments received 10/4/24, to Ned Bessie Road. Board of Health, office and basement meets bedroom definition, considered fourth bedroom. Septic is designed for three-bedroom. Variance is required from 1,000 IA regulation since houses in Phase 2 North. Variance can also be requested for fourth bedroom and basement with approval from Sewer Superintendent. Conservation, Dan Kent, received October 2, 2024, to Ned Bessie Road. Resource area inland bank buffer zone to land underwater body and estimated habitat of rare wildlife. NOI application was approved unanimously due to the dwelling being moved further from the resource areas. Decrease is in-house footprint and increase in naturally vegetated areas. Existing dwelling is part of the inland bank and concerns about bank stability, wildlife habitat loss, and tree die-off from root disturbance during and after construction. NOI applications supplied certified reports for each, and commission placed multiple conditions to ensure resource area protection, conditions as follows. Number one, three-year mitigation monitoring and maintenance contract with certified professional. Number two, weekly construction reports of foundation and retaining walls submitted to the Conservation Department. Number three, stamped structural plans for retaining walls submitted to the Conservation Department. And number four, report any adverse impacts from water runoff after a storm. And... We have a, a letter and materials from Mr. William Daniels, abutter, dated October 7, And I'd be glad to do this anyway. I'll read the letter first, and whatever's attached to it, I'll then get into indicating what it is, okay?
That's great.
October 7, 2024, Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, from William Daniels, 26 Lewis Avenue, Mashpee, Mass. And abutter to 2 Ned Bessie. Members of the board, the subject subdivision was established in or about 1918. The objective of the developer was to create a seasonal campground. The subdivision plan included right-of-way access to the campsites over original ancient ways, Jones Road, and Melissa Avenue. Ned Bessie, a stonemason, constructed a camp dwelling on the beach of Mashpee Pond in 1934, which is the subject of this meeting. The neighborhood is unique, as is the stone dwelling built in a fragile environmental location. In 1963, Ned Bessie Lane was originated overlying the ancient way and remains as a paper street. Property owners over many seasons and currently enjoy camping in tents and a variety of permanent structures, as the original developer intended. Access and egress to the property, to their properties, has been over stone and gravel pathways. Property owners with interest in the campground plots intentionally left the natural features in place for posterity. Mr. Selenius is seeking zoning approval to demolish the former Bessie Stone Camp dwelling and construct a larger year-round home. Mr. Selenius's proposal is inconsistent with the intent and purpose of rights set out in duly recorded deeds with the campground subdivision. The campground was established with various sized lots that included tenting and permanent camp structures for seasonal use. Each campsite laid out in the subdivision plan takes into account access and egress to the various lots via a right-of-way. Mr. Selenius's 12,000-square-foot campsite plot has no fee interest or frontage ownership on the privately-owned Ned Bessie Road. In fact, over time, the legal address for the subject plot was known as 4 Melissa Avenue. The address change was initiated without notice to surrounding campground plot owners. It appears the intent for that change was to establish a building lot which is inconsistent with the intent of use or inherent rights as duly recorded. Additionally, this particular area highlights the historic value added features of Mashpee. Property owners in the subdivision are committed to maintaining and preserving this unique area, and further to enjoy their inherent rights to and maintain their property and neighborhood as intended at the time the campground was established. Further, as like many Mashpee citizens, the surrounding property owners have serious concerns regarding overdevelopment and its impact water resources in Mashpee as well as case law at large. Mr. Selenius's plan is inconsistent with decades of established inherent deeded rights of past and present owners as well as current zoning regulations. Surrounding property owners within the original campsite subdivision and others object to his plan to seek special conditions to create a building lot. Attached via perusal is a letter and plot plan from Mr. Selenius seeking to purchase a fee interest in the private layout of Ned Bessie Road. In order to resolve these issues, I have retained a civil engineer and anticipate that work will be completed by October 21, 2024. It appears these matters are likely to require a land court decision regarding property rights of owners within the original campground subdivision. It is with foregoing matters in mind, I ask that this board deny or continue Mr. Selenius's application for special consideration to create a building lot at this time. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Sincerely, William Daniels and Tanya Daniels. Now, included, and I will read this as part of our record as well, is a, a note from Peter Selenius, dated 11/25/20, addressed Bill. When we talked the other day about me taking the road off your hands, this is the area that I was thinking of. You could stop paying taxes on it and maintaining it, but you'd still be able to use it to get down to your waterfront and get manure delivered to your garden. Give it some thought, and we can talk about it early next year. Stay safe, Peter. And attached with that is a, a map and a, a photo, aerial photo, I assume, showing the area in question. Now, in addition to that, we have a, a letter from A.W. Wilson Associates, Inc., October 4, 2024, addressed to the Mashpee Zoning Board, relative to the application for special permit, SP 2024-50, Selenius Raise and Replace, to Ned Bessie Road, and then R file 2.2243.00.
I can split it.
Again, this is a...
I can split it. If you want to read it so far, then I'll take, I'll take over whenever you want to stop. Or do you want me to start? Because it is long.
Sure. I'm glad to keep on doing, get it on. Yeah. I'm on a roll.
Go ahead, you're on a roll.
Okay. Again, this is dated October 4, 2024, A.M. Wilson Associates, Inc. Dear Board members, Relative to the revised special permit application for 2 Ned Bessie Road, SP 2024-50, dated 10/4/24, we have a number of concerns. First, the area of the lot and thus the lot coverage numbers are incorrect. Under the court decision in Andrews versus Furbush, the court found that in Mashpee, wetland resource areas cannot be counted towards lot, toward lot area. The project plan shows in excess of 4,600 square feet to be inland bank. This is considered a resource area under Mash General Laws, Chapter 13140. Consequently, the lot area is closer to 8,200 square feet and the existing site coverage closer to 20.03% than the numbers provided in the application. Without access to the project CADD files, these numbers have been approximated from a PDF. The project engineer should provide precise and accurate numbers for the board. The gross square footage proposed for the new dwelling appears to be approximately 2,593 square feet of enclosed space. This is not an overly large house, except that it is on only plus or minus 8,200 square feet of upland. Further, the proposed change from seasonal to year-round significantly increases the use of the property. In reality, stone driveways should be considered as impermeable as, over time, the weight and turning movements of vehicles compress the stone into the underlying sediments, and the surface will not allow water to infiltrate. This would impact lot coverage calculations as well as increasing the amount of surface runoff to be dealt with. It is interesting to note that the 2021 septic repair plan filed with the Board of Health, Exhibit A, shows no parking area, only a narrow plus or minus eight-foot driveway where the parking area is now shown. So, the parking court is apparently a feature that has been constructed sometime in the last three years and should not be considered as having protection from zoning changes. Section 174-33 requires a 60-foot setback, from 50-foot setback from wetlands and water bodies. Although the existing house is actually based on the plan within the freshwater bank resource area, there is sufficient space on the lot to locate the replacement house at least outside of that resource area. This would not require relocation of the septic leaching area, only the tank and D-box. If the purpose of zoning requirements is to bring sites and buildings into regulatory conformance insofar as possible, moving the new construction landwood should at least be considered. The prefabricated house components will be delivered by truck. These trucks and the components they carry are often, quote, "oversized," end quote, and need a significant horizontal and vertical clear width. As can be seen from the attached photograph, Exhibit B top, significant vegetation along the length of the road outside the lot frontage will need to be removed to allow this to construction. The tree and shrub removal will completely change the neighborhood character in the approach to the site to the detriment of the neighbors. The abutters to this section of the road are more than 300 feet from the site and consequently receive no notice of this hearing, although they will be directly and significantly impacted. Further, the section of Ned Bessie Road adjacent to the site is nothing but a vehicle track within a visually undefined area of yards, Exhibit B bottom, running down an unprotected slope. The trucks delivering the prefabricated house components will have a high likelihood of running outside the vehicle tracks, damaging the adjacent property. With nowhere to turn around, they and the crane used to install the components will likely need to park in the road, limiting access to the house beyond the site. My client and abutter to the project, Bill Daniels, is a retired builder with experience in construction, in constructing modular homes, and can speak directly to the problems involved. If constructed and converted to year-round use, roadway obstruction will likely become a common event. The driveway, as shown on the plan, is only 20 feet wide. A car or truck cannot easily turn around in this area, so they will need to back onto Ned Bessie Road, which, based on the plan, has a travel surface of plus or minus 10 feet, but which in reality is only two tire tracks across the lawn. No delivery truck will pull into a driveway they need to back out of. They will park in the street, completely obstructing. If the house becomes a year-round dwelling, these kinds of problems will increase to the detriment of the safety and convenience of the neighborhood. Section 174-17.1 allows existing nonconforming buildings to be raised and replaced if the new project is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and if there is adequate parking. As noted above, the construction of the proposed building will substantially change the nature and character of the lot and the accessing roadways from a rural setting to a suburban one, with significantly fewer mature trees and masking road edge vegetation at the initial section of Ned Bessie Road and Melissa Avenue, and though the widening of the travel surface where it now consists of a single vehicle track. The abutters believe this change will be detrimental to the neighborhood, not only changing the aesthetic character, but runoff and drainage infiltration in the road layout likely contributing to ponding and flooding issues. Reduction in the tree canopy will also lead to increased ground and ambient temperatures in the summer. The application says the site is not in any overlay district. However, it appears that the site actually is in a groundwater protection district. This overlay district under 174-80 allows for maintenance and repair of existing structures that is silent as to replacements. If there is no increase in impervious cover, as can be seen from the 2021 septic plan, Exhibit A, the driveway parking area was increased sometime after the septic system was installed. It is unclear when the shed was placed on the lot relative to the adoption of this section of the bylaw. This section also limits total impervious cover. Those calculations are missing from the application and plans. As noted earlier, the driveway and parking areas should be included as impervious cover for the purposes of this section, and the area of the inland bank cannot be counted towards lot area. Section 174-82-4 requires roof drainage and other developed drainage on single-family lots to be handled in rain gardens or vegetated swales, which can remove nitrogen not in catch basins. Therefore, the current design is not conform to the relevant zoning standards. It appears that, as filed, the project does not conform to the requirements of the bylaw. It will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing small-scale seasonal home. We would also note that the Chapter 91 license for the pier has expired. Consequently, that structure is no longer valid and should not be reinstalled. For all of these reasons, we believe the board should not grant relief to the project at this time. Rather, it should require the provision of accurate lot area calculations, deleting the area of wetland resources, revised structure and lot area calculations based on the actual lot area, consideration of relocating the new house outside the 50-foot wetland setback at least to the pond and outside the wetland resource area itself, revised plans and submission materials acknowledging the site's location in the groundwater protection overlay district and showing compliance with the requirements of the district as to impervious cover and drainage design. Notice to abutters of the length of Ned Bessie Road, where the project will require tree removal and perhaps widening, and a detailed discussion describing the truck width and three prefabricated house components width, the crane width, arm length, and clear swing requirements to set the house, how the road surface will be protected, and access preserved during construction. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully submitted, A.M. Wilson Associates, by Arlene M. Wilson, PWS, Principal Environmental Planner, with copies to William Daniels, Dave Morris, Zach Seabury, Health Agent, and Andrew Vittanis. And attached to that is a plan of the septic system, referred to in the letter. Photographs, Exhibit B, referred to in the letter.
Are you tired, Charlie?
Still throat?
You can go home now.
You're in your money, Charlie.
All right.
I think that's all. That's all we have.
Does that, does that cover all the correspondence? All right, board questions?
My Board of Health question was answered by Board of Health.
I have a couple, but I'll wait.
I'm good.
Yeah, just a question. The old structure, what was the height? The new structure, what's the height?
So, based on the application that was filed, I think the existing height was somewhere around 12 feet, I think? And the new height will be 25 feet, which you're...
Is that average grade before?
Yeah, existing average grade. That should be.
Okay, and I noticed, looking at the back, it's three stories.
Two and a half. I think David has reviewed that, or is in the process of reviewing it. It's two and a half, it should be two and a half. Because you have the 50% rule.
Do you have a, a plan that shows the existing average grade on the foundation?
I don't...
I asked for that.
Okay. Then I can have the engineer...
We made that part of the checklist of when you come back, presumably if you are asked to come back.
You gotta know where the average grade is, and we can go off by that. It has to be more than half the height of the basement.
Because what you have is, you have a pretty sloped lot, so, you know, that average existing grade is... Anything else? Totally be calculated.
No, I'd just like to hear some...
So, we'll need, if, if in fact, the board wants to extend to get some additional information, if the board chooses to extend additional information, if we could just include that, please.
Absolutely.
So, I have a couple of questions. I do...
Let me finish. Oh, sir. And I'd also like to hear some rebuttal to some of the accusations, I guess.
Well, I think that goes hand and fist with what I'm going to say, so maybe I can. So, I concur with the definition 13140 in reference to inland coastal bank is, is an included aspect that you cannot include in your lot coverage.
Correct. I, I agree with that.
You agree with that?
I agree with that 100% except for it should only, see, Mashpee has, there's two definitions of an inland bank for this town. There's the state definition, and there's the town definition. The town's definition is more, includes more land. We had this, I had this question on 104 Lakewood. The town planner at the time, Evan, his position was only the state inland bank needs to be deducted from the wetland resource area because the bylaw references the state statute. So, that's how my position on how...
Well, it does refer to 13140.
Correct.
I concur with that. And 13140 clearly states inland bank...
Yes.
As a resource area, just so everybody understands. So, Conservation Commission of the State of Massachusetts, if you have a clue, their guideline is 13140. Those are the rules and regulations that they follow. And in that is the fact that inland banks, which are on this plan or on this lot, cannot be included when you lose lot coverage. So, they're going to have to recalculate lot cover. I don't know how that applicant came up or the, the engineer came up or the, or the consultant came up with the 21.03 if they don't have a CAD drawing. I, I don't get that, but that's...
Well, I think they're just suggesting that it wasn't provided to the applicant.
Yeah, but then you don't go with 20.03. You say it's maybe over, I don't care.
I don't know, I'm not an engineer.
But the next issue, I, I'm not so sure I agree 100% with your philosophy of the 2,500 square feet for the groundwater protection. I think, I think you're... I think, I think you're still bound by certain things here. I think it's still doable. I think you have a matter of right to be able to do it. I don't think you're prohibited from doing what you want to do, but I still believe you have some things you gotta deal with in the groundwater protection, and a lot of it, I believe, is gonna be probably Board of Health.
Okay.
I would think. There are some things that you just probably might want to take a look at, only because I believe that 2,500 square feet just says that you're, that you have allowed use because you're less than 2,500. It doesn't say you're exempt from the prohibited uses.
Well, I mean, I would disagree...
You and I are gonna argue on that, and that's fine.
Because if you read, if you read what you need for a special permit, it says...
Yeah.
The rendering of impervious, of impervious of greater than 15% or 2,500 square feet of any lot, which is greater, provided that a system of stormwater management and artificial recharge, it goes all that. And then it's, it goes to the next paragraph, which was referenced by the consultant, it says, "These standards may be met by using the following or similar best practices." That's specifically under the special permit requirement. We don't need a special permit.
I don't believe you do. I do believe, though, you still fall into certain criteria of that bylaw.
Wow.
I, I, I agree with you 100%. That's saying that you don't need a special permit.
Right.
And I don't think you do. But I also believe there's certain criteria within the groundwater protection district you gotta follow. But just take that...
You think that's a Board of Health question?
Well, I think there's some Board of Health issues in the groundwater protection area. There's no question. I think you're gonna deal with that from a Board of Health standpoint, more than us. The question begs to be asked is when the consultant brings up the issue of not drainage pits, but, you know, rain gardens, I'm not so sure that's part of the requirement. I don't know.
Other said, I think that would be, my reading of the bylaw would be something like that would be required if you're rendering more than 2,500 square feet.
I can see your, I can see where you're coming from.
Right. But we can have the engineer reach out to the Board of Health.
But I, I think that from the, from my aspect, I think you've gotta look very closely at lot coverage, because you may, when you look at coastal bank and you look at that green line on here, right, or the blue line on this plan, right? Now, the green line, I get mixed, the green line on this plan, it's, it's considered part of the lot. I'm not so sure.
Right.
And I understand you reduce to the footprint. I get it.
But I think what I want, I guess what I'd like to hear from the board is, so, that green line is the Mashpee definition of inland bank. So, the state inland bank is closer to the water. So, my position is, and what I would tell the engineer, is that it's the state inland bank definition that you go by. That's how we did it on 104 Lakewood. That was how the, that town planner suggested we do it.
I would say the following. I would ask the zoning enforcement officer his opinion of that, because it's...
I agree with what the attorney just said. The, but the bylaw specifically refers to the state law, so that's what you should do.
So, you got your, in my opinion, it's up to the board, but the zoning enforcement officer just answered his question.
I agree with David.
He's the boss.
So, I will have that...
There's your answer.
I will have that calculated based on the state definition.
And my point is, is the plan certainly has to be correct.
Absolutely.
I think you should ask for continuance.
I'm also, I'm also concerned about the fourth bedroom.
Yeah. I mean, that is, it's a Board of Health issue, so the Board of Health is suggesting...
And the Board of Health made it an issue.
No, I know.
They brought it up.
They may not give the variance. I mean, that's not, if the Board of Health approves four bedrooms, what is it the zoning board's concerned, whether the Board of Health approves it or not?
I also agree.
Wait a minute. I misread with the Board of Health.
It is a fourth, it really is a fourth bedroom.
They said, they said the septic's built for three bedrooms. If you need a four, if they want to continue with a four bedroom, I believe what the Board of Health said was that they would need a variance from the Board of Health.
Fire department would, would consider that a bedroom.
Who is the variance? Board of Health or us?
The Board of Health does, fire department will, and I, and I consider a full bedroom. If you have a six-foot opening, it changes that.
Well, if, if we're gonna extend this, let's go on that presumption. Why don't you deal with that issue before you come back?
Yeah, you need to go back...
It would make it so much easier for us.
But I, I mean, you can read the Board of Health comment again. I thought that's how I read it, was that if they wanted to keep the fourth bedroom, that it would need a variance.
Why don't we get some clarity on that between now and then? And just wrap it into a big bow, and it's gonna make it so much easier for us.
And Chris, it just says approval from sewer, sewer...
Or the sewer commissioner. I think what...
That's because of the phase two.
It's being phased in, so I think there's a little bit of leeway with how they can do it, because this is gonna be on septic with...
That's because that's phase two of the sewer treatment plant. You now have to go to the sewer...
All they gotta do is make that a six-foot opening to that room. It's not an issue thing.
Well, they could do that, too.
They could do that, too.
That's a simple...
Right. But we can address that one.
But backing up what John said, I'm looking at the plan more clearly now from what's supplied. In my opinion is that lower level is more than 50% exposed, not below ground.
I don't know. I don't know. I know he was pretty close, and he moved it further, so I would assume that it'd be...
Yeah, no, I agree. That would have to be...
Usually, it's the whole fronts, the grade is up, and it's sloped on both sides. This one, the whole left side is at Waco, and the whole back is at Waco.
I would recommend adding that to your list.
Howie Beck can be 50%.
Adding that to your list.
I'm not used to dealing with it. We don't have, we don't have that information.
Yeah. It's just something else we need to...
If we can get a list so that we know that when you come back, we've covered them all, please?
Yes.
I mean, everything we just talked about should be in a list. It doesn't have to be in the motion, I guess, but you certainly deal with it when you come back so that we don't have to deal with it from a board standpoint?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd also like some clarification on this Ned Bessie Road being a private way...
Well, it could...
And the idea of, and I didn't really follow it, so I'd like an explanation on why there's a purchase of part of the...
Why there's a what?
Purchase. I believe there was...
Oh, I don't know.
There was a request.
Offered a request. I presume Ned Bessie is shown on the assessor's map?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like some clarification on all of this.
It's a, it's a private road. There are private roads in the town of Mashpee. This property fronts on it, so...
In my opinion, it's a public way. Show it on that.
Maybe.
I'll drive down it tonight. No one's stopping me. I can tell you that right now.
I drove down it today.
I don't know what the, the comment about Melissa Ave is. This property has no frontage on Melissa Ave. It has no access to Melissa Ave.
Well, I mean, you've got a board member that's concerned about that. You should try to...
I'll see what I can do to address that.
I'm less concerned about that.
Well, there's a lot of accusations made. I'd like answers on all of them.
Well, some of this stuff is not zoning. I mean, the building construction methods, the size of the crane...
That's true.
No, 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 no.
But I'd like you to address them.
Okay. Well, the builder is here, too. If you, if some of those questions can be answered tonight, he's here. If you'd rather have those questions answered on the 13th...
I think if you're gonna continue, we can address that.
Put a bow on it. Just put it all together.
That's fine. So...
Can we memorialize the discussion?
Yes.
Please?
So, this board, at the next, the next meeting that we have, we're to provide the board and the building commissioner a plan that shows your average existing grade. We are going to show him lot coverage, lot area...
I can stop you there, and a conversation should be had with the zoning enforcement officer. We don't need to go back and forth. My goal is at the next meeting to have the zoning enforcement officer say, "We looked at it, and we're okay with the lot, with the height."
Right, well, I agree.
I mean, the...
Well, I'd like to comment on a couple of zoning issues as well. I mean, and one is about the road, the access to the, to these houses. There are year-round houses that need to go down Ned Bessie Road, and my concern isn't the delivery trucks. It's, it's the fire apparatus, and that's a zoning bylaw. I want to know that this is able to handle the fire apparatus, like it says in the bylaw, I think 174-32.
I mean, there's an existing structure there now, so the fire department has to be able to get there now.
I would think, I would think that, but, you know, I do have a, I do, don't understand ownership of Ned Bessie Road. I don't understand that. It is not a campground. I mean, as it's contended, and it's not zoned as a campground, and it never will be. So, again, I'm more concerned with, you know, the fire department being able to get to this road. I don't want somebody blocking that area for them.
Did fire comment on this?
No, not that I know of. I don't think they, or where...
Maybe they should comment on the road.
Yeah. I will tell you, I drove down that road today in my Mini Coupe, and I didn't think I should. Once I got halfway down the road, I was like, "Oh, my God." It went like...
Well, put that on your list, counselor.
Yeah, I'll put, I don't know if Mary Ann, do you, does that get, I think it gets circulated to all departments, and that includes a part of it.
He might have...
So, you don't think a tractor trailer's getting down there with a house in the back?
But I know there are year-round houses to the left and to the right of this property.
Why don't we memorialize this, and I need to go out to the, to the audience?
Okay.
Why don't you tell me what's on your list?
All right, so number one is average existing grade, to provide that to David and for his review, so he's comfortable with it before the next meeting. The other issue would be the 50%, 50% coverage for floor, whether that's a story or not, whether the basement would be considered a story or not. So, again, bring that to Dave prior to the hearing. Revising the lot area and lot coverage calculations based on the state inland bank. We will contact the Board of Health, just maybe they can give us a more clear commentary on, you know, the bedroom issue versus the phase-two sewer. As I said, they may have some, there's more leeway because it is gonna be phase two.
Reach out to the sewer commissioner.
And reach out to the sewer commissioner. We'll send something off to the fire department. Again, Board of Health regarding the groundwater protection overlay district. I guess the question is, you know, does the board take, you know, agree with my position that a gravel driveway is not impervious?
I agree with that.
I, you know, we've had that more than once by engineers come in front of us saying a gravel driveway is impervious.
No, it's pervious.
It's pervious, yes. And I, I argue that it isn't, but I'm not an engineer, so I buy it. It's that simple.
Right. I mean, again, the builder's here. We can have him available at the next, so he can talk about the cranes. I mean, it's a modular home. It's gonna be one day, in and out. I don't know anything about whether or not trees need, or need to be pruned or taken down. You know, the builder, you know, my client can certainly talk about that at the next meeting. I don't know what this, what the letter about it being a buildable lot or not being, it's a lot, and it has a house on it. It is a buildable lot. So, I, you know, I don't know where that's coming from. I can get into the rights of Ned Bessie. I'll have to look at the deed, but...
I would like to see copies of the deeds and show me assessor's maps, and I have a little bit of knowledge when it comes to that.
I'm so happy to provide some more information to the, to the board on that. You know, again, it's, it's a residential zone. It's an R3 zoning district. Year-round houses are allowed. Year-round houses in this area, whether they be on Ned Bessie, whether they be on Melissa, whether they be on Lakewood. That's all the day.
Is that the extent?
I believe so, unless...
What I'd like to do is go out to the audience. Anyone in the audience having to say about this application, please? Yes, sir, come on up. You can just give me your name and what your involvement in...
Address.
And address, please.
My name is Lee Riley. I'm at 6 Ned Bessie Road. Peter is my next-door neighbor, and I've got a lot of problems with this whole situation. He's trying to put a good-size home in a tiny two-box lot, and every year I go to Florida. This year, maybe we'll see what happens, but hopefully everything's good down there. But every time I come back, there's something different. You know, the driveway's totally done differently, and the grade, you know, everything's totally, and I just kinda grin and bear it, and I say, "I hope he's got permits for all this," and it's just like, I've never seen the permits, and I hear they're missing in action, so that's a whole nother thing. But I am a longtime friend of Peter and his family, and I hope we're still friends after all of this, but I just, I'm opposed to this idea, and I just think it's not practical, and it'll change the whole landscape. We have a nice, quiet dirt road, and he's, I think, gonna interrupt all that. I really do. And he upset my mother. She's 86, and, you know, the views are gonna be gone, some of them, which I understand happens. But I'm also confused by the lack of structural engineers' reports showing that the current house is beyond repair and tear down. As in the last three or five years, Peter has put tens of thousands into the property to complete kitchen remodel, a new deck, two heat pumps, units, a new septic, and now all of a sudden it's structurally unsound. That just doesn't make sense. Why would he put all his money and then say now it's falling apart? And he's currently living there. I don't speak to him at this point, but I, I find it hard to believe that this home is even falling apart, and he just wants to build a raised structure and basically pull a fast one on everybody. I mean, everything's happening so fast. He wants to put the structural module, modular home, I'm sorry, modular home, and where are you gonna fit this down, this little dirt road? I live right down on this dirt road. She was there today. You're gonna have 18-wheelers, a big crane come down there and swing these things? We're on a nice, quiet area here, and I, right on the water, and I just don't, I don't like it at all, and I'm opposed to this.
Thank you for your input, sir.
Thank you.
We will note it. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir, please give me a name, address.
William Daniels, 26 Melissa Avenue. You read the letter that I supported. I'm a retired builder. I stopped building maybe 40 years ago, 35, 40 years ago. I'm almost 84. But I, I'll address one thing. I did a prefab home on 235 Cammet Road in Marston's Mills. My building license back in that time was 023, 053. I don't know. I let it go maybe 40 years ago, or it was before I came up here. And I did that, I used to do that for Kaiser Industries, and I took the, one of the ones this is, happens to be, this was a five-bedroom house, and this is a nightmare. What work he did in removing the trees down, like the other neighbor said, the heavy truck that they put in there to lift the trees up and then load them on screwed the whole road up in that area. There's a big bump, like you said, when you drove down there. I can't keep fixing that road from the things he does. In the driveway, he's done it without a permit. There's no permit. He cut the banks down. If we have 20 inches of rain like in Florida, we're gonna lose the swale and everything. And so, I can give this to you, folks, if you want a picture of some of the result, and then the, all, everything in his proposal is wrong, or incorrect, I should say. For example, I found several maps. Here's one I'm gonna, I'd like to give you, and it shows that his lot size, length on the, on the, what he claims to be on the right-of-way is actually 69 feet 6 inches by a map dated before his surveyor plugged in 75 feet. All the boundaries are gone there now, except one at the pond. So, my engineer that I've hired, that they haven't been able to get this, we were supposed to have it for you, is gonna come, and we're gonna set boundaries. It may end up in land court anyway. And then to the address of the things, I have all the information to show that the family made that a campground. There's three tents there. They come every year from New York. It was a tent grant, a tent campground. He never had a fee in the road with the previous owner, who is an attorney. I've spoken with him. They offered him to get a fee in the road by moving his driveway instead of moving Instead of moving it where they told him to move it to, so it would get even near the boundary, he moved it just the other way, and he increased the size of it. When you drive down that hill, that place looks awful. And then I own the road. It's been deeded back to me, the deeds are in the thing, you'll be able to see that. If you get back to the old deeds, it shows the campground. And also, one mistake in my letter...
Excuse me, do you have a copy of that deed?
I have copies of all of them, yes.
Could you present it to the board, please?
Oh, I don't have it with me.
Oh, well, just, if you could just get it over to the board, I'd just like to see it, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you.
And so then I have a problem, because I know you can't put that kind of a, you folks have expressed it. From my experience, you can't put that kind of a building down there. It's gonna destroy the whole lot and the whole neighborhood. It's impossible. And on Cammet Road, I'll leave these things with you, pictures, and then you have my, my old building license number, if you need it. And thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for your time. And you can just give that to us, and we'll put it into the record. And if you could just get that, the deed in reference to your saying that you own Ned Bessie Road, I'd like to just review that, if I could. Thank you.
I do like to, wanna say something. When I went down Ned Bessie today, I went, I've been down here. That old farmhouse came down, what, six, seven years ago? And no one opposed that.
No, I did not oppose that. I tried to get it to go to conservation, and they wouldn't take it at the con, to, 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 not only get it to con, I did not. Barbara is a friend of mine, we did not oppose that whatsoever.
So, but, so you've had, what I'm saying, the neighborhood has recently, within the last, less than 10 years, has had a raise and replace.
Yes, yes, she replaced her building, but she wanted to deal with, she was hoping it could go as a family into a historic district. That's, her family settled the Cape with the Native Americans.
Well, thank you very much for your input. Anyone else in the audience have any input in references to application? Yes, ma'am, just give your name and address, please.
Good evening. Arlene Wilson, A.M. Wilson Associates, working with Mr. Daniels. My office is in Marstens Mills. I feel as though I need to apologize to the board member who had to read my letter. And I'm not gonna go through all of that again. But I just wanted to reinforce concerns about the plan issues. Because it does seem as though some of the items on the plan are kind of a moving target. The, in particular, the parking court. And I have a firm that's done wetlands permitting and engineering for about 45 years now. And the first couple of years of a stone driveway, it'll drain fine. And after that, it loses all of its permeability. And by the, by six or seven years, it might as well be concrete. If you, if you happen to get a builder who really knows how to build a stone driveway or a stone road, it won't perk on the second day. So it does need drainage or grading. And it needs to be shown properly on the plan, together with when it was installed, which I think is relevant to the groundwater overlay district. Because by the time you figure out what the lot area really is, the lot coverage there, I think, is gonna be substantially more than 15%. Also, the road, the vehicle tracks that get you to this site need to be shown on that plan, as opposed to making it look like you've got a 10-foot-wide travel surface, which really don't. And I would also like the board to remember that the big trees on this lot are going to come down with permission from the Conservation Commission. There are a couple of beeches on the site that have the most current arbor ick, and they're probably gonna, gonna die if they're not removed. But there are a couple of very large elm trees that are also coming out. They have to come out, because you can't put a modular house on this site with those trees in the way. They're in between the septic leaching field and the house, and all of that's gonna go. So I'm not quite sure how this project relates to your new tree protection by law. But somebody in town will be able to figure that out. But I, and I think there are substantially more trees that need to get shown on the plan because of that. And the question of whether the trees at the intersection of Ned Bessie Road and Melissa are gonna be subject to that, because they're required to be altered in order for this project to go forward. So I'm glad I'm not working for the planning department on trying to figure that out. But, but it all needs to be addressed as well. And I really appreciate the time the board has spent on this, and the fact that you do read the entirety of people's letters into the file.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, thank you. All right, board, any more questions?
No.
Okay. So Chris, David, you have any more questions? Any more input?
Oh, good.
I'm of the opinion you're gonna ask for an extension?
I am, I just wanna, can I just quickly address a couple of things that were said? Driveways are not lot coverage. They're not lot coverage under your definition in the bylaw, so it's just structure. So I just wanna make that clear, so there's no confusion by anybody that the driveway has any impact on the lot coverage on the lot. That's not how Mashpee defines lot coverage. And then, secondly, the tree bylaw, as this board has been doing consistently with its conditions, that it has to be filed with the...
I was gonna say that, but I felt that bottom line is, if this board were to approve this application someday, whether it be next meeting or ever, in that motion would be, and historically is, the fact that they're gonna have to deal with the tree bylaw.
Absolutely.
We totally understand that.
Absolutely.
Every, every one of them.
It's in every...
Yeah. So I'm not worried about that.
Okay.
That's fair enough.
I think, I think that we're gonna deal with all these issues, and hopefully we can get down that road, but who knows? We'll see what happens.
So I think we're all in agreement on the list of items for the next meeting. And then I will ask for a continuance to the 11/13 meeting.
Can I get a motion to accept the continuance?
Can I just ask you a question?
Certainly.
If he actually owns the road...
He's gonna have to deal with that. I'm gonna look at some deeds. One of my fortes in life is access to properties, because I've built on some really strange areas that you'd never figure you could get from here to there. But I'll, I'll look at those deeds, and that's why when the applicant, or the gentleman who wrote the letter, said that he has a deed showing ownership in Ned Bessie, I really wanna look at that one. So there's, I'm gonna compile that, I'll look at it, and I'll report back to the board what I think.
It doesn't matter, it's gotta be a right-of-way.
Charlie, it's November 13th.
Okay. November 13th, is that all right?
Yeah, is that what I said?
Chris, let me do it this way, if I could, just to make sure.
You all set with that, Mike?
Yep.
Okay.
This motion relative to 2 Ned Bessie Road. The owners, through counsel, request that this hearing be continued to November 13th of 2024. In the meantime, between now and then, counsel for the owners will be in contact with Board of Health, Sewer Commission, and Fire Department, and provide additional information relative to existing grade and the issues of lot area and coverage, as discussed and as agreed in the talk leading up to the motion.
Yes.
Second.
End subject.
Yeah, I think you said Board of Health. Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Okay. So everybody in the audience, just to let you know, is they're coming back November 13th to hopefully address these issues that have been raised, and to have another conversation. And you are all welcome to come back. Okay. That being said...
58 minutes on the clock.
All right. So I don't, we have to, we don't sign anything, right? Yes, we do have to sign something. We have to sign the extension. Okay.
Ross, do we have to sign something?
Yes. Well, she's gonna have Chris sign it, and we have to sign it. Yeah. We need the extension.
We've got it.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay.
Great.
Get yelled at.
That's no longer that.
Yeah, what do you want from me?
When the rats away, the mice will play.
Isn't it Catherine something?
Oh, boy. Now we gotta sign the extension.
Which bench should I use? Let's use this one. Get your hands off those. Okay. There you go.
All right.
Done.
Hold on, we have one more extension.
Got it. Charlie, are you able to, not too gonna do it yet?
No, I, I get it, bro.
You still read, is that all right?
I'm cool.
I don't wanna wear you out, you know what I'm saying?
I'm a young man.
What is today?
Okay, good.
Tonight?
Soon as I get that document back, away we go.
What is today? Moving that ahead of...
10/9.
I don't know.
I think we were moving it.
Now he'll give us that request. You gotta move some stuff around, right?
It was Chris who was right.
We just need to get to Riverside, because then Scott's gonna... Say bye-bye.
Child's is gonna go last now. That's what he's stepping down on.
Right, but the other ones are only just gonna be extensions, et cetera. There you go. So why don't we do this?
We changing the...
Well, he's gonna have a request. Why don't we start with Riverside? Chris, wanna come up, and why don't we read in, Charlie, 29 Riverside, please?
Sure.
And then, Chris, you can then tell us what you wanna do in reference to this one and the next application. How's that? The other ones, in reference to how you wanna take them out of order, whatever. So Charlie, if you would read 29 Riverside Road into the record again, please.
I will do that. 29 Riverside Road. Petitioners' owners Russell J. and Ann E. Spencer are appealing the Building Commissioner's decision under Mash General Laws, Sections 8 and 15, denying to issue a building permit for a garage or accessory apartment that the existing on-site cottages constitute accessory apartments and is not allowed under 780 Code of Massachusetts Regulations 51-00. Massachusetts State Building Code, petitioners' owners seek a determination that the proposed accessory apartment is allowed under 174-45.4 on property located in an R3 zoning district. MAP 119, parcel 81, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from September 25, 2024 hearings at the request of the attorney.
So Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, you've worked out your issues with...
Yes, we worked out the, we met with the Building Commissioner, worked out the concerns that he had. My clients are satisfied, David was satisfied. I am filed a letter to withdraw my appeal, so that's all.
I'd like to get a motion to accept the withdrawal of the appeal in reference to this application.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good. Now, tell us what you wanna do.
Yeah, my, my mistake, I was confused. I thought that 25 Riverside was gonna be heard right now, so I, I'm not, I don't wanna put the board in a position of leapfrogging, 'cause 25, I'm gonna present, so...
Okay.
I don't wanna...
All right, got it.
But you wanna hear 15, Charles?
So at this point, then, we're gonna, yeah, we'll have to sign that document.
Mark, it's 29.
Sit.
29, 25.
25, so what?
I have 29 and 25 Riverside. And I thought this was...
Sorry. Next-door neighbors, must be.
Pretty close.
Where exactly is Ned Bessie Road?
It's off Old Sandwich, South Sandwich Road, and you gotta go down... Sandwich, yeah, it's off Old Sandwich. Go to South Sandwich Road.
Exactly. So the next one will be four regular members and... Wow, Charlie, you've worked so hard tonight, you deserve to at least sit, right? And then maybe we'll have someone else read. How's that?
Whatever you say.
So why don't, so four regular members, Scott stepping down, why don't you sit? And maybe we'll, we'll figure out who's gonna read. So that will be Charles. So Mike, do you wanna read 15 Childs Road into the, into the record, please?
Yeah, where is it?
I can read here, Mike.
New hearings, okay. All right, under new hearings, 15 Childs Road. Owner Martin J. Riley requests a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residential structure and replace it with a new, single-family residential structure with an attached garage on property located in an R3 zoning district. MAP 114, parcel 93, Mashpee, Massachusetts.
Sir, if you could...
Good evening. Martin Riley, representing myself, 15 Childs Road. We're seeking a special permit under 174-17.1, 174-33, raise and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling located on our three zoning district with a new, single-family dwelling structure with attached garage. Existing structure is non-conforming in several aspects. Side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, frontage, lot size, and we're completely within the flood zone. Which brings our lot coverage to 100%, which is non-conforming. We're not creating any new non-conformities with this project. We're eliminating setback non-conformity. Front setback is going from 35.4 feet to 44.3 feet, which is conforming. We're improving the side and rear setbacks. Northwest side setback is improving from 11.1 to 11.2 feet. Southeast side setback is improving from 9.8 to 9.9 feet. And the rear setback is improving from 13.6 to 13.7 feet. The lot coverage is expanding slightly from 770 to 799 square feet, but it's still under the 20% at 19.98%. The 799 square feet includes 69 square feet of egress stairs, so the structure itself is 730 square feet, or 18.25% without including the stairs. Current home is connected to a cesspool, so we'll be replacing that with an IA septic system. And currently, it's all lawn with no means to capture water runoff. So that will be addressed with the installation of some dry wells. And the Conservation Commission has approved this project. I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Well, what I'd like to do is read some letters into the record.
Yep.
You wanna read them, Charlie?
Yeah, sure. I'm the Conservation and Board of Health, so... And, okay. Conservation comments, 15 Childs Road. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage, LSCSF. NOI application received approval with a unanimous vote due to IA septic install and mitigation plantings on a lot where no natural vegetation currently exists. Following conditions were applied to the approval. Two-year mitigation monitoring and maintenance contract with a certified professional. Board of Health. 15 Childs Road. Septic design for two-bedroom with IA technology. House is only one-bedroom, no problems with health department. And there's a couple of letters from Butters. All right.
Fire away.
One, received October 9th. From Maurice and Mary Castanelli, 41 Monmouth Square Road, Mashpee. Members of the zoning board, my name is Mary Castanelli. My husband and I own the property next to the proposed structure, 11 Childs Road. Given that the proposed structure is comparable to a two-story structure, my concern is that the stairs going up to the apartment would potentially allow occupants to view my backyard and into my home. As a courtesy, would the owners consider placing the stairs on the opposite side of the structure? Because our houses are so close, it would ensure more privacy. Thank you for your consideration, and this matter, Maurice and Mary Castanelli. And the second is a, I believe it's an email sent by Richard T. Jackmoth. It appears to be 10/9/2024 to Mary Ann Romero. Hello, zoning board of appeals, message. Ray, 15 Childs Road requests to raise existing dwelling and build boat garage with above dwelling. Childs Road is a small dirt road that currently allows for access to several homes and a right-of-way to Hamblin Pond. 15 Childs Road is a small lot with minimal yard access for parking or turning vehicles around, especially if multiple working vehicles, a dumpster, and portable potty are located on the property. The request for the raising of the existing dwelling on 15 Childs Road and replacing it with an 18-foot boat garage and a one-bedroom dwelling above in an outside staircase raises the following concerns and questions from surrounding neighbors. Number one. Given the number of vehicles, large demolition bulldozers, front loaders, cement trucks, personal contractor vehicles required to conduct the raising and building of a new structure, there is a concern for where such vehicles will locate during the demolition and... there is a concern for where such vehicles will locate during the demolition and building process. The road is narrow enough that if one truck is parked, cars will not be able to pass. See attached photo. Several properties will have their access obstructed, excuse me, if vehicles are parked in the road. In addition, in order to turn around, cars will need to back up onto Monomoskoye Road or use private property or the right-of-way access to the water at the end of the road to turn around, which is not desirable. Number two. Given the difficulty of turning vehicles around on such a narrow road, there is concern about damage to abutting properties and vegetation. How will the town monitor such activity? And who is liable for damage to the road, vegetation, plantings, and abutting properties should such damage occur? At the Mashpee, number three, at the Mashpee Town Conservation Commission meeting on September 12th, no questions were asked about the handling of excavation materials of stormwater runoff, nor were any requirements made to contain any excavation materials from possible runoff into the narrow roadway. Butters would like confirmation that such measure to protect excavation and stormwater runoff during and after construction will be in place. Four, Article 174.39 states that there should be two parking spaces per dwelling unit. It is not clear from the proposed plans that ample parking space is available. The street is not large enough for any on-street parking. Number five, finally. If upon considerations of the above concerns and questions, approval is given to proceed, we ask for consideration around the timing of the construction effort to minimize the disruption to road and personal dwelling access and to better ensure the safety of small children and others using the road and the right-of-way. We ask the board to consider that demolition and building be done during the off-season months, November to April. Thank you to the board for taking the above points into consideration. Above all, we, the Butters and neighbors of Monomoskoye Island, hope to preserve the integrity and safety of our beautiful space. Sincerely, Ann Wood and Richard Jackma, Shirley and Michael Grandfelt, Mary and Maurice Castanelli, Julie and Donald Barton, Paul Danielle, Susan and Wayne Simmons. And I think that's all we have.
Is that it, Marianne? Okay. So, board questions, please?
I'd just like to see if you could address some of the concerns on what brought up, especially, you know, number one, three and four.
Three and four, yeah. So our contractor is aware, it's a small lot, it's 4,000 square feet, it's a dirt road. He thinks he will be able to manage the process so that we're not, or we're as least impactful as we can be. Once the structure is framed, it's a garage, it's a 39-foot-long garage. So they'll be able to park vehicles there, they'll be able to store materials there while they're continuing on with the finish work. Same thing with turning around, right? That's number two on that list, right? We're gonna manage that, there is parking out on Monomoskoye Island Road, right? So people can park and walk down and work. I'll jump to number five, where.
I don't think there's much parking on Monomoskoye, though.
But does.
Move down towards the.
There's not parking on the property.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm concerned about the park, I'm just saying I'm, I'm not so sure you wanna park on Monomoskoye.
True, but again, you, you know, if you look at the front of this property, there's, it's 40 feet by 35 feet to the front of the house now, right? So that's 1,400 square feet that's available for parking now while the building is coming down. They're not putting a dumpster on site, they're gonna demolish the building and cart it away in a, a dump truck, so we don't have to worry about storing a 30, 30-yard dumpster on site. As far as the timing, our intention is to get this started as quickly as we can, once we get our permits in place, and be done by springtime, right? That's our intention, you know, Mother Nature may have other ideas, but that's our plan. Conservation Commission, number three, it was the stormwater runoff, so right now, it's complete lawn, and there is no stormwater runoff. It's an old house, the water just comes down and sits. It's a relatively flat lot. I think it's all within .1 feet elevation. So there isn't a lot of runoff, it's not a sloped lot. But, you know, we'll mitigate any runoff during construction, and we're gonna be capturing that water runoff once the construction is complete with the dry wells. Did I miss anything? Oh, the parking spaces. I mean, there's clearly at least two parking spaces in the driveway that will be there once we're complete, right? In front of the structure, it's an H20 tank that's going in for the IA. So, that's drivable and park, you can park on top of that.
What about the moving of the stairs to the other side?
I need to talk to, you know, the builder and the architect. The issue is that if I put it on the other side, the house that looks down on the other side, it's the same issue. It's a two-and-a-half-story house to the northwest. So, I guess somebody on those stairs will be looking right in, but I, I don't necessarily have an issue with it. I just need to know if it changes anything else with the design. But I would consider it, yeah.
One thing, are you all set, Jonathan?
Yeah, you're just gonna have dry wells, right?
Dry wells, yeah.
Yeah, it shows two dry wells, it's gonna be, so that I need a little bit more information on those dry wells. Being a tight site, we want you to keep your water on the site up to a 25-year storm, because we don't wanna be in a position where your water, because you're creating some additional impervious spaces. So, that being said, I just wanna make sure that your water stays on the site.
Right. So, I'm, I don't have a calculation for that, I can tell you that nothing exists today.
Yeah.
The coverage, the, the building that's going up is basically the same size, and we're adding the dry wells, so.
Well, I, I think it can be done, and I, I'm, it can be conditioned, we can deal with that.
Yep.
I don't know how we deal with the staircase issue and that, if you're gonna look into it, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't have an answer. I don't know if there was a reason why the stairs were put there compared to the, the north side or the west side.
I mean, it is, it's a long skinny lot, it's fine, it, I'm not being, I'm not against it being negative any way, shape, or form, I'm just saying that
Yep.
if that could be worked out, it seems to me, although I am, I remain a little concerned, if you're gonna put them on the other side, then is the person, not yet, I'm not gonna go to the audience yet, but we're gonna find out if the person that lives on the other side's gonna have the same issue.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure we should be.
I don't think we should be dealing with that.
Well, it's just like if somebody had a condenser, if somebody had a generator, we've always said, hey, you know, try and screen it, put it here, trying to be.
I think we're, in the past, we've kinda left that up to the
Yeah.
neighbors and the owner of the property.
Yeah, and there is a set of stairs inside, right? If you look at the floor plans, the construction set,
Yeah.
there's another doorway at the back with a set of inside stairs, so, you know, depends what stairs are being used primarily, I don't know.
Well, somehow, I'd like to see the drainage a little bit more work on the, I mean,
Yep.
only because got a lot of impervious materi, surface area here, and the water needs to stay in the lot. Up to a 25-year storm, and after that.
Yeah, there'll be less impervious area because the lawn's coming out, right? It's all mulch and crushed stone, so.
Well, but you're gonna be, so the lawn's coming out in the area of the leach field?
Yes.
So you're probably not gonna make that very pervious.
It's not a leach field, it's a sledgehammer.
Yeah, I, I get it, yep.
Yep. With two-inch crushed stone above it, right?
Yeah. But you're 24-inch, 24-foot, two-inch-wide trench with a double washstone?
Yep.
So what are you gonna put on the surface of that? Above that?
Crushed stone.
Okay. So, still, I think it's important.
So, the entire lot's in the flood zone, is that correct?
Hundred percent, yeah.
But, the proposed structure is still less than 20%. I don't think we've had an issue with that in the past, have we?
No. I don't think so.
No, not. I think I had numbers there.
It's the structure coverage. We realize the lot coverage is 100%.
Right, right, already, but we're still using our own method, we're still below 20%.
Right.
So David, what have you got to say?
I'm struggling with this proposal, um, because of the lot, the lot size is 40 by 100. And I, you, this, I thought this was the, the house next door, that's, do you live, do, where did, you, your wife owns the, the house next door?
Right.
So, these are abutting lots. This is an undersized lot, so if there was no house, it's not a buildable lot. So, what's keeping it there is because there's a, there's a lot there. So I'm struggling because of the garage. Is it a garage with a dwelling? Is that the proposed use? 'Cause you're saying it's a garage. You're proposing it as a garage with a, with a, an apartment upstairs. And, and you have the house next door, you know what I mean? So, I don't know, so are you, I.
Primary use has to be a house.
I don't know who's living in the house now, or what's going on.
Right.
So I'm struggling with, you know, when you rip it down.
Now, I'm really struggling, 'cause you just were concerned about putting the stairs on the other side, 'cause you were concerned about the other Butter, who's your wife.
Correct.
I wouldn't be so concerned about that, I think.
I shouldn't say that.
That's a little upsetting to me.
If you look at the 17 Childs Road, which Butts 15 Childs Road, there's a sliver of land in between there and the house that I'm referring to.
No one lives on it, right?
No, no, the 17 Childs is occupied. It's rented year-round.
So this is gonna be rented?
There's a sliver of land on 17 between 15 and 105 West, Monomoskoye Road West. If you look at a, a Cessar's map.
So is there a residence, somebody living in a residence, forget about slivers of land, on the opposite side of where your stairs are located to, on this plan? Is there someone who is going, is living there today?
That abuts the property?
Yes.
Yes, but there's no structure there. It's a 10-foot sliver of land. If I go to the other side of that 10 feet, there's a two-and-a-half-story house. There's nothing in between those.
Your wife owned that house?
No.
It does not.
The abutting property she owns.
The, it abuts it completely.
It's an L-shaped lot. There's nothing on the sliver of the L, but it looks out to the other house.
Where is the sliver of land?
17 Childs, my wife.
17 Childs in.
And it's unbuildable.
Completely abuts.
It has a house on it.
What is this?
There's a house on it now, but not on the sliver of land, on the other, it's a big, bigger lot.
They abut, they, they abut each other with the 100-foot lot, the entire line. So the stairs over there probably shouldn't be a big issue.
I'm just saying, if I look out those stairs.
Your Butter is your wife. The problem I'm having is, the problem I'm having is, obviously, you're gonna use that for your boat, storing your boat, and the accessory use is the, is the apartment up top.
Right.
I have a problem with that.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
What?
Because the lots, these lots should be combined if you're gonna change the use.
Wait, does, doesn't the primary use have to be a house, not a garage?
Well, it could be considered a house with a garage underneath.
That's what we asked.
That's, I'm having a problem with this. I'm, I'm struggling with this zoning-wise, the way it's presented.
That's a very important statement, because no matter what we say, when you get to him, he's got a problem.
We met and discussed it, and I thought.
Yeah, we, yeah, there's something we gotta figure out, yeah. You know, if it was a garage for a car, you know, and I'd have a different, I'd have a different outlook on it, but it's, it's clearly you wanna store your boat there and rent the upstairs. So, and you're not living in the house next to that.
Correct.
So, these are being rented, both houses are being rented. I have a, I have a problem, the, I think, to me, it's an undersized lot. I, I think this, I think the garage should be accessory to your wife's house. 'Cause I think they're, they're common ownerships.
Well, they're not common ownership, but.
Well, they are common ownerships, but, you know, that, they do have two different structures, which, that's the problem. That's the problem, I'm saying, if you're changing the use, if you're changing the use, it makes, it changes the whole story.
I'm changing the, the use, it's, it's, it's a.
Well, the use is, the use is a garage for your boat with an accessory apartment up top.
But it's still a house, I could sell that as a house, a single-family house with a garage below.
You could, that's, that's what I'm struggling with.
Well, why, why.
You must've owned it for a long time.
Why don't we do this?
You still have a cesspool.
What I'd like to do is, any more questions, then go to the audience, 'cause I'm seeing some hands in the audience. Let's go to the audience, let's get some more information.
One more thing I just wanna bring up about the building plans. The, the basement and the garage level, it, it can't, that can't happen. It's in a flood zone. That doesn't, you can only use it for vehicle storage. Uh, it can't be used, the, the bas, the lavatory.
Oh, the lavatory, okay, got it.
The lavatory in there, that's, needs to be eliminated.
Okay.
Alright, so why don't we do, is, you all set, David, for now?
And building height. I, I wanna see what the building height is.
Alright, what I wanna do is, people in the audience, please, will take, if there's more than one, yes ma'am, please identify yourself, your address, and feel free to speak.
Hi. My name is Julie Silver, I'm the alleged wife. And I say alleged, because technically, we are not married, so it's not common ownership. Um, I own the property at 17. Mr. Riley owns the property at 15, so it's not, and there was a pre-existing structure on it, which was in existence, so we have every right to build on that or to replace that. Those lots are not combined, because legally, we are not, we're not married. It's tenants in common, I believe, or tenants in the entirety, whichever one it is. And that slice of 17 Childs is an L-shaped lot. Um, and that slice that we're talking about, where you can put the staircase, you put the staircase right there, you're going to look directly down onto 17, as well as into the bedroom of the Burke's house on Monomoskoye Road West. So I'm not quite sure if that is the best option for that staircase. And like Mr. Riley suggested, I think the primary use of access for that 15 Childs will be the back staircase inside, because truly, who wants to walk up a huge staircase like that in the rain when you can go indoors and walk up that same level?
Understood. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this application? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Uh, Richard Jackmoth, 231 Monomoskoye Road. My wife and I wrote the letter. Um, and I guess I just wanna reinforce some of the things that were said, and which you addressed, which Mr. Riley addressed as well. And the reason I'm, I'm speaking is because we're in the process of completing a 450-square-foot addition to our house, and, on a 14,000-square-foot lot, and our lot looks directly across the street to 15 Childs Road. And, and so I've learned a lot this past summer with the construction, and what takes place, and the size of vehicles, the length of time they're there, what they can do to property. That's, I just wanna point that out. It's already been stated, the road is a narrow road. There are people at the end of the road, the Burkes and the Grandfields, and there's a right-of-way to Hamblin Pond, which is used by people on the road for kayaking, bathing, et cetera. There are now five children within three houses that are all under four years old, that are running up and down the road. That's a concern. The, the runoff that was, sounds like there, there isn't gonna be any. When we did it, in our construction, we're at the same level, flat. We had to install all sorts of wattle all around the perimeter of our yard. There was no mention of that in conservation. There was concern about what would happen with the excavation materials. That had to be either carted away immediately, or if they stayed on the site, they had to be covered with tarps so that rain wouldn't wash them off into the street. That's a concern. And as far as parking on Monomoskoye Road, well, there's no parking in front of our house, there's no parking in front of the, the house on the other side of Childs Road, and I don't know where any of these vehicles are gonna park. They're, it seems like every contractor has a, has a dump truck, has a, a truck. We've had seven cars in our backyard at one point this summer, including excavators, bulldozers, cement mixers, flatbeds to bring in this giant crane to deliver the, the, the forms for the foundation. Again, they seem to be addressed. I don't really think there's a lot of room to maneuver. And I'm not even sure how a boat is gonna get backed into this garage. But, so these are our concerns, and I appreciate your listening to me.
So, thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience? Okay.
I'm Mary Castanelli. And I am just concerned with the stairs. So when Julie said they could go up the stairs inside the house instead of go up the stairs outside the house, so stairs have to be outside of the house? Why is that stairway gonna be outside of the house, if there's gonna be one?
It needs, it needs two means of egress, and one through the garage.
Right.
Can't, is not the primary me, means.
So if it's through the garage and they rent it, someone's gonna walk through the garage with their boat there and get into the house?
Well, I don't know if it's separated. I think it's, yeah, it's separated.
It's not where the boat is.
Yeah, it's really not in, inside, it's separated from the garage. Yeah, it's really not in, inside, it's separated from the garage.
It's separated from the garage.
Yeah. So one, one stairway won't be affected, but the, the prime, the other stairway will be on that side. I, I agree with you. I think it could be on the other side. They both come to the same area.
Julie said that, you know, you'd see the house over here and the house over there, but I live right beside there, so she has no, there's no concern for that for.
Your house is closer, what you're saying is your house is closer to this, this to-be-constructed house, and then the other house on the other side?
Yes.
By how much? Roughly? Is it substantially different?
You could, you can see it on the, her house is existing, house is eleven.
I see, so you're, so you're existing eleven?
Yes.
Uh-huh. I got you. Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Okay. We'll go back to the board.
Ron, I have a question. So is my understanding that Mr. Jackmaw's, you know, addition renovation project just completed, or is still in process?
It's still in progress.
Still in process. So, so you have the rec experience with the inconvenience of construction, you know, vehicles and, so have you had a position from your other neighbors relative to the same issues that you're raising the applicant?
We have, we have time to keep outside, and so all of the vehicles are parked.
I wanted to understand, you know, what are the circumstances around?
You need, you need, so we can get it on record, you need to come up, and you need to, if you both could speak into the mic that way, become part of the record, please.
I, I was wondering what the difference between your renovation project was as compared to the applicant's in terms of ability to handle, you know, construction equipment, machinery, crates, and so on and so forth.
Because our backyard, which is basically, there was nothing in it but a cape lawn, if you will, and it, no trees were taken down or anything, and it's 14,000 square foot. And so we could, vehicles could fit, they could pull in there and turn around, and several vehicles could put in there. I mean, there, and our addition is, you know, 450 square feet. It's, you know, twenty, less than 25 feet off the back of our house by 18 feet.
No, I understand, and thank you for that. I just, I was curious, there's some sort of a double standard type, you know, similar project?
I don't think it's a double, it's, it's just that they don't have the room, and, and so they're gonna fuse the road, and we have plenty of room in our backyard.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other board questions?
Yeah, what's the height of the proposed structure?
I see it. See it?
Doesn't really show, I don't think.
No, it's not showing in here.
Right, I don't see it.
Yeah, it's not.
I see where it should be, but it's not there.
Yeah, G2 is the.
All right, let that be on record. That's gonna be figured out. Any other questions, specifically you, Jonathan? Because you still have the floor.
I'm good.
David, it would seem to me, what are your thoughts?
I think, I would suggest that we continue this.
Seems to me we should continue, sir, and you might wanna sit down with David. Get this straightened out, or whatever, whatever his thoughts are, because the zoning force, there's no reason for us to move forward. If you were to get an approval for us, and then he turns around and says you can't do it. I mean, you're never gonna get to where you wanna get to.
Fair enough.
So, all right, so when would you, when's the next available time, please?
Is it still the 13th? Or December 11th?
It's up to you.
We got room?
You make the call.
You're the boss.
December 11th.
December?
Level 11.
I made the call.
December 11th?
If we could do it earlier, I'm, I'm trying to be.
I leave that after our secretary, she works around the block.
If we are gonna do the project, the sooner we get started, the sooner we're done.
Totally understood. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but.
She wants December 11th.
She wants December 11th.
Okay.
All right, so I'd like to have, so you're, are you requesting an extension till December 11th, sir?
Yes.
I'd like to get a motion to accept the applicant's request for an extension till December 11th.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
You're gonna sit down with David? And you, you heard a couple other comments in reference to drainage, a couple of things, right?
Yep.
And if you could work on the staircase, it'd be appreciated.
I have a suggestion, if it has to stay on that side, maybe put last one.
We got the height. You've, you've got all those things you brought, Jonathan brought up the height.
Get it on the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Riley, curious, is the apartment upstairs going to be year-round, rented year-round?
Yes.
So it, that might be the usage of that property may then be the apartment that's supposed to be the garage, in my opinion. At least I would view it as such.
Well, I know there's a housing issue down the cape.
Which is where I'm at.
We gotta stay on the record or move forward, so. We have to sign this extension.
I'm all set.
No, that's trash.
Thank you.
Slap my hand.
There you go, sir. Charlie was on this, right?
Charlie was on it.
Was it Charlie?
So the next one, we're not gonna start yet, so.
Scott gone?
Scott went home.
Scott went home. You're gonna have work later.
He left?
He asked me, I said, listen, you know, we've got associates that need, that want the work.
There you go.
George, you haven't, you've been silent tonight. Why don't you sit on the next one? How's that? That good?
That's good. I'm sorry, so.
Well, this one is Pembroke.
Is that one from that?
It hasn't come back yet. It's stuck with Jonathan.
It's coming.
Here it is, Pembroke. All right. So you're gonna sit on it, so the next one will be sitting with the four regular members, and George, whoever wants to read it, it's up to you. George, you wanna read it, please?
Sure. 26 Pembroke Drive. Owner Heidi Delakis, trustee of the Heidi M. Delakis 2017 Trust, requests a special permit under Section 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family residential structure and replace it with a new, single-family residential structure on property located on R-3 and Papaneset Overlay District, Map 123, Parcel 79, Mashpee, Mass. Received request for a continuance letter from attorney.
Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Chris Corain, representing the applicant, 26 Pembroke. There's been some revisions to the plan that are necessitating a continuance. My letter asks for November 13th, but I will defer to the board. You know, my, the problem that the board has right now is that you don't have a second meeting in October, and you don't have a second meeting in November, so.
Your call.
How, how full are we?
So I would say December's good.
December 11th, boss, that's it. So you're asking for an extension till December 11th? December 11th, is it?
I'm asking till the 13th, but if you.
I understand. But we're giving till December 11th. How's that? If you get my red.
The first available.
Yeah, exactly. Or, or we can vote. So December 11th? Can I get a motion to accept the applicant's attorney's request for an extension to December 11th?
So moved.
Have a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, extension document, please.
We haven't voted on anything.
It's amazing.
We've just been signing stuff.
I, we have not had a close-up public hearing tonight.
Oh, boy.
It's crazy. We have not closed a public hearing tonight. I have not put a checklist, asked to buy a checklist, public hearing, once.
We haven't had to, when they asked for continuance?
Close a public hearing for a continuance. You leave it open.
What about the ones that we?
Okay.
Do you wanna make sure George signs it?
You're out of here?
We got it.
Okay.
You're on, I trust. Ron, I'm gonna take off.
Yes. Joy, Joy?
Wait, George, you're gonna sign this?
Okay, I gotta sign that. You're going nowhere.
You want this hat?
I won't put the hat on until I sign.
Till you get outside. Signing Scott's name?
Yeah.
10-9, 2-4.
So stay calm. You, and then George, and then he can leave.
I might not be. She'll tell me, because it might be parent teacher.
Parent teacher.
Brand new.
Yeah, nice new one.
She made me take a personal day. She made me. You know, she's the boss.
Very good. Have a good night. Drive safe. Take care, George.
Okay, so sitting on the next one will be three, four regular members, and say Mike, and Morris, you're gonna be up to the plate, I'm sure, at the next meeting, so get ready. Is that good?
Absolutely.
All right. So it'll be the four plus Mike, and feel, you know, guys always give input anyways. So Mike, would you read 25 Riverside into the record, please?
25 Riverside Road. Owners Carl F. Oliver and Carol A. Oliver, trustees of the 25 Riverside Road Realty Trust, requests a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residential structure and replace it with a new, single-family residential structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, Map 119, Parcel 82, Mashpee, Mass.
Counselor.
Good evening, members, again, members of Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant owners of 25 Riverside Road. As the hearing notice that's been read, this is a request for a special permit under your raise-and-replace bylaw 174-17.1, with also relief under 174-33, because this, the lot is partially within the flood zone, the structure that we're proposing to raise and replace is totally within the flood zone. So, for those who recall 29 Riverside, Monomoskoy, in this area, there's a lot of multiple buildings, dwellings on one lot, and this is no exception. So there are three buildings on this lot, three residential structures on this lot. We have one by Riverside, we have one in the middle, and then we have the one that's closest to the water, this one here. This is the one that's proposed to be raised and replaced. And we're simply raising and replacing in kind this structure here. Okay, we're not touching the others. Only this one. No, there's no ADUs. No ADUs proposed. I'm sorry for the easel, but. So this, this lot is located in the R3 zoning district. It's a 40,000-square-foot minimum lot area, 150-foot frontage, 40-foot front yard setback, 20%, 15 siding rear, 20% lot coverage max, 50-foot setback to wetland. We do have a few non-conformities. One is our lot size, so taking out all wetland area, including the flood zone, we only have a 14,202-square-foot lot. So again, everything below this blue line is flood zone, everything above that line is upland, and that's about 14,000 square feet. So for lot area purposes, 14,202 square feet. We are within the flood zone, so again, we do not meet the 50-foot setback to the wetland. Our lot coverage, based on the 14,000 square feet, is 27.2%, so that's a non-conforming condition. Our frontage is 75 feet, which is non-conforming for 150-foot requirement. And our southwest side yard setback, which is up here, is only 3.6 feet. So that is a non-conforming condition as well. So this proposal is to raise and replace that, the building there. We will be reducing structure coverage and thereby reducing lot coverage. So we're going from 27.2 to 25.9. That represented, represents a reduction in approximately 183 square feet of structure coverage. That side yard setback that I talked about, which actually is northeast, not southwest, of 3.6 is being improved to eight feet. So we're reducing structure coverage, we're improving the non-conformity there. We are gonna have a building code and flood zone compliant structure. There is an IA system that is being installed. Microfast system. There is a quick, quick four infiltrator drywall, that's the one we, that's shown here. The detail here. So it's all managed.
Oh, I see.
This project has been approved by the Conservation Commission. We are not creating any new non-conformities, we're not intensifying any of the existing non-conformities. You know, it's consistent, again, you know, with what the board approved at 29 Riverside. You know, we're not all too different there, except the fact that we're decreasing lot coverage, and there's no ADU. So overall, I think it's a, a good project, consistent with the neighborhood. And plenty of parking. Obviously, this lot can support more than two vehicles. So with that, I'm happy to answer any of the board's questions.
Charlie, would you read the letters into the record, please, first?
Yeah, I, I don't have Board of Health, but.
I have it right here, if you wanna read it.
All right. Conservation Department comments first for 25 Riverside Road. Resource areas LSCSF and buffer zone to salt marsh. NOI application was approved with the unanimous vote due to reduction in dwelling footprint, IA septic installation SWM systems, and accommodating for future salt marsh people. Concerns with the radiation of the salt were addressed with future high-tide line marked on the plan of record with the following conditions applied. Three-foot-wide data planting bed along the 1.9 to 2.0 future high-tide line. Two-year mitigation, maintenance, and monitoring contact with a certified professional. And Board of Health comments received 10-4, 24 for 25 Riverside Road. Board of Health, septic is only upgraded for one building on the facility. Innovative slash alternative onsite septic systems regulation. IV applicability, when an IA septic system is being installed on the facility, then all systems on the facility shall be connected to the IA septic system or be upgraded to an additional IA septic system.
I need to condition that.
So all the structures are going into this?
Apparently, all the structures are going into.
I think we're gonna have several conditions.
Is that right, Chris? All of the structures are be accommodated by this?
That doesn't seem like. Septic is only upgraded for one building on the facility.
So they're not all, they're not all connected to this system. So I think that, you know, that, I don't, is Zach saying that they all should be connected?
I think he's trying to get them all in the AI system.
Yes.
That's just a guess, but that's probably what he wants to do, to deny, right?
Say shell.
Shell? Well, I guess I'll leave that to the engineer to.
Why don't we just read that into the record, and then we're, we've got some people in the audience that can, that can speak to that, too.
Okay, relative to 25 Riverside Road, on the Board of Health comments, what it says, the last two sentences, "When an IA septic system is being installed on a facility, then all systems on the facility shall be connected to the IA septic system or be upgraded to an additional IA septic system." So there's a.
Cut and dry.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so any other, to read the record?
Nothing.
Is that it, Maria? All right, so we have to deal with that, because clearly Zach's wanting everything on that system, or put another system in.
No, it says either that, you're right.
Either that, one or the other.
Now, the applicant may know more about the septic than I do.
She has to come up.
No, this is Board of Health.
If you could just come on up and just give your name, please, and your address, and that way we can get it in the record.
Sure. Hi, my name's Carrie Oliver. My parents own the property. We have three septic systems right now. One was installed in 2002, when my parents built one of the houses. I'm not entirely sure when the other one was installed, but there are three separate systems.
So what the Board of Health agent is saying right now per letter to us is he wants either all your property on that lot tied into the one system, or you're gonna put additional AI systems in. So you're gonna get rid of those, you're gonna upgrade all the other systems to AI systems. So you're gonna have to make a decision. So this board has some options, we could. So, this board has some options, we could maybe condition it, but that's up to the rest of the board, but I can tell you that you're gonna have to deal with the Board of Health.
Yeah, you should visit them.
Yeah, you're gonna have to, so anyone, any other questions from the board? Cause I wanna get, I wanna hear from David. All right, David, what have you got?
Is this gonna be the primary house, or is it, is this gonna be year-round, the other, are the other, are all the houses year-round?
They are not. So the one, this one is just a summer cottage, has no heat. My parents are in one of the houses, the one they built in 2002, and then we have another summer cottage, about 500 square feet, that is just used.
Okay, so just two of them gonna be year-round?
Two year-round, yes.
Okay, and then the foundation, how's, what, what's going on with the foundation? Are you gonna?
Will be, yes, up, like a whole, almost a whole story, I think.
How is the foundation gonna be, uh, it's actually, gonna be a full concrete foundation with flood vents?
Yes.
So I'm gonna need a stamp plan on that, I mean, I didn't know if the conservation had, cause they usually don't approve things like that.
Yeah.
You know, I'm kinda surprised, but, yeah, that's fine, that's can be done, I wanna stamp, stamp plan on that, on, with flood vents, so we'll figure that out during the permit process, it's all right.
Dave, did they need to see that stamp plan?
Who?
Conservation?
They have.
I thought you said they, I hadn't seen that.
But Conservation has approved this, right?
They approved it.
Yeah, they approved it.
They're, they're good to go.
Conservation has Board of Health.
Board of Health, so.
Yeah, I was just surprised, I, I expected it to be on Pierce.
Oh, it's not in the velocity zone.
But it doesn't have to be.
No, it's not in the velocity zone, it's just, it needs, it's flood zone compliant, it just doesn't, it's not in the velocity zone, so it doesn't even be on Pierce.
So. Let me go to the audience, if I may, audience participation, anyone in the audience, you'd like to say anything? Mother, please? She needs some guidance, just kidding, you're all sat? Good. So what, what is the board's thoughts?
I, I think we need some insight from the Board of Health before we can go forward with this.
Okay, you agree?
Cut and dry, isn't it?
So the board'd like to do?
Why couldn't the board condition it, it's a Board of Health issue? I mean, what, what does, what does it have to do with zoning, that the board would need to continue this? If you put a condition in, that it has to meet with the Board of Health requirements.
Chris, we've, we've been through this 100 times, where we try and get Conservation and the Board of Health to.
But he's given you it, he said the condition, that it has to.
It's their blessing before we move forward.
It's gonna totally change the plan, Chris, think about it. If your, if your client says, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do two separate AI systems, you may, I mean, in this tight lot, it's gonna change.
David, would you have a problem if we conditioned it and they provide new plans?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
He would not.
He would not.
But, it's, you know, I wouldn't, cause I can deal with, I can deal with.
I don't.
We need to deal with that in the permanent process anyways, but.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
All the buildings have to be on this one system, and you are unaware of that, does that system need to be upgraded to handle all three buildings, is it three or four?
Who are they?
Or they have their own system, John, another system.
It is my opinion, being an installer, this system is designed for probably one or two bedrooms, that's 220, now they're gonna add all these addition, the additional bedrooms of the, so it's gonna change the existing design, or they're gonna leave the design the way it is and add another system, which is gonna add a whole nother component.
We're not, I think, we're not increasing the bedrooms.
What would that system cost?
An AI system today, is this a fast system, I didn't even look, is it a fast system? It's a $40,000 system, approximately, 30 bucks.
But to put in two, wouldn't it be cheaper to upgrade the one?
Sounds like to me. If I was the installer, I'd recommend to them to put one upgrade, but that's up to them.
Right, the Board of Health, obviously, has given them the option to do one of two things. Connect to the, you know, make it sized properly, that he's comfortable that it's all connected, or they can put in another one, so that's completely up to the applicant.
The problem though with that, Chris, is, is if we make the motion that's normally stated, which is no changes to the plan, I don't know how you're gonna build, I don't know how you're gonna do either one of those theories with no change to this plan.
Means you have to come back.
You have to come back.
And I, I don't wanna see you again.
If you continue, you're gonna have to see me again.
Well, yeah, but it'll be all wrapped up in a bow.
But if we approve it, and you change the plan, you have to come back anyway.
It's on every single motion.
I understand that, but again.
You're gonna change the plan, it sounds like, the Board of Health has already said, you're changing this plan.
As you know, we have to sign these plans off.
I understand that.
You are changing this plan, guaranteed.
You know, to, for a project that is, meets all your zoning requirements.
Listen, we're getting agendas filled up, we'd rather move things along, believe me.
Now we wouldn't be on till December 11th. If I say one thing, this, this part of town will never be on the soil, so this, this is important, this is for, for the rest of this.
I don't know how you get around it.
The rest of this property's life.
I wish we were gonna have to, I don't know how to get around it.
Did you see the Board of Health?
Well, Cape and Islands would, Cape and Islands would have submitted this to the Board of Health for approval, so I don't know why it didn't come up then.
You know what the great thing is, is you're gonna get, you're gonna get to where you wanna get to, and the bottom line is, you're gonna go back to the Board of Health and figure out what they want, and make a decision what you wanna do.
All right, so I, I have a compromise, I think. It's gonna be a lot quicker if we approve it with conditions, and if they upgrade it, he comes back and spends 15 minutes here, or 10 minutes or five minutes.
I don't have a problem with that.
Rather than go through the whole thing again.
I think, I think I have some language that might help that. That could be done as a minor modification, because it's.
You know what, it's totally fine with me.
Okay, I'm happy with that.
Let me make a triad, all right? It would be conditioned on receipt of a stamp plan approved by the Board of Health indicating conformity to the provisions set out by the Board of Health in their note.
And then it just needs to be signed by the chair.
Okay, that's fine. My point, so then you cannot put in your language, the rest of that, of your motion, that you cannot change this plan.
Right.
Because this plan's gonna get substantially changed.
It'll be changed.
No question.
Because.
If you wanna leave it up to me, I'm totally fine with it, I'll come in and look at it and sign off.
Isn't that, I'm like, change takes nothing, it's five minutes, right?
Well, here's the thing, if the board is comfortable with the project accepting the, having to approve the septic, I'd rather have the approval come back, and I'd rather have the approval tonight if the board's willing to approve it, and I can come back on a minor modification on the plan.
I agree.
I think that's the way to do it.
So, you have to advertise, well, if it's a minor modification.
On our case, you don't have to, and I think this would follow as a minor modification.
So we, we should make sure that we understand what, that a minor modification, what that minor modification is gonna be, cause we're already making that decision for the next meeting.
Correct, so what I, what I always do.
Minor if they're only changing the size of the system.
Right, but when I submit a letter to this board.
Okay with that.
When I submit a letter to this board asking for minor modifications, I always reference why, the support for that minor modification, I will do the same on this. Yep.
I agree with that. Is that good, David?
Yeah.
All right, so then the motion's gonna state something to the effect that, you're just gonna make a motion that's very straightforward, knowing that there's a pretty good chance you're coming back for minor modification.
Correct, yeah, I mean, I think you could do your standard conditions.
So don't even consider, just make sure that in the motion, it states that, that they're gonna, that you're gonna deal with the town comments, including but not limited to the Board of Health.
Right.
And at that point, you also state that there's no changes to the plan, he'll have to come back, you're then, at that point, making it a necessity for him to come back, which is what we wanna do.
But what we wanna make sure of is that it's conditioned on receipt of a stamped plan approved by the Board of Health, consistent with the information provided.
I agree.
That's fine.
Cause the Board of Health's gotta say, yeah, I like this.
I agree.
That's fine.
I don't have a problem with that.
I just wanna make sure that we're on.
No, procedurally, then, once you have the signed, approved Board of Health plan, then you're gonna request a minor modification.
Right.
The minor modification then can be presented and approved.
Right.
Yes.
Agreed.
Correct.
Yes.
All right, are we, are we on board?
I'm on board with that.
Motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Motion in reference to the application, unless anyone else has anything to say, David?
I'm good.
Anybody else have anything to say?
No.
Okay, motion for reference to the application, please.
Okay. Twenty-five Riverside Road, owners Carl F. Oliver and Carol A. Oliver, trustees of the Twenty-five Riverside Road Realty Trust, request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residential structure and replace it with a new, single-family residential structure on properly, property located in an R-3 zoning district, map 119, parcel 82, Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Laws 40A, section nine. Number two, site plan, prepared for Carrie Oliver, Twenty-five Riverside Road, Mashpee, Mass, date July 1, 2024, 9/3/2024, add berm at Salt Marsh, 9/4/2024, add property label at Riverside Road, miscellaneous zoning table edit, 9/20/24, add limit of maintenance, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by Mark Dibb, civil number 45937, and Matthew Costa, land surveyor, number 52282. Number three, building plans prepared for Carrie Oliver, Twenty-five Riverside Road, A1 cover, A2 main level floor plan, A3 second level floor plan, stairs section A4, front and back elevations, A5 elevation right, A6 elevation left, A7 roof plan, A8 foundation plan, prepared by Pro Mod Homes, drawn, excuse me, drawn by TF, date 8/13/2024. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Additionally, are conditioned upon receipt of a stamped plan approved by the Board of Health, are consistent with the requirements set out by the Board of Health in their report to the zoning Board of Appeals dated 10/4/24. Condition that the applicant, excuse me, number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the building department review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter 175 of the town bylaws, prior to the application of the building permit. And number seven, the board finds under 174-17.1 and 174-33, that the proposed project as submitted is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions prior to removal of the existing structure, and that there is adequate land area on the subject lot to provide sufficient parking, and there are no new non-conformities being created.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, great, thank you very much, good luck.
Thanks.
Good luck. Thanks, everybody, have a great night.
That was very nice of the board, I think, tonight, I was much kinder than I was gonna be. Tell you that. Yeah, it saves them some time, but it sets a little bit of a precedent, too. He said they can't do it unless they change the plan, so he's gotta go change his plan.
Coming at you guys.
It's gonna change.
Has to prove it, and then he has to come back and see, he has to knock it in.
Say what? If we don't, um.[1712.22]